We are going to come out of closed session. Do I have a motion coming out of closed session?
I'll move that the closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes.
I'll move that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation for the student to attend Southeastern Alternative School Refocus Program in student case number 080816-A.
And a second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board uphold the superintendent's, excuse me, yes, that the superintendent uphold this, that the school board upholds the superintendent's recommendation for the student to attend Southeastern Alternative Refocus Program in student case number 080816-A. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes.
I'll move that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation to lift the student's expulsion two months early and allow the student to be read, read admitted to his base school in student case number 080616-B.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board uphold the superintendent's recommendation to lift the student's expulsion two months early and allow the student to be read admitted to his base school in student case number 080816-B. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the motion passes. Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. We have two scouts here with us this evening who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Justin and Noah from Troop 161 here in Warrenton. Gentlemen, if you'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. At this time, we are going to open our public hearing for the conveyance of a portion of Cedar Lee Middle School property. This announcement was put into our, the paper on our site. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? Give it thirty, ten, five, three, two, one, all right. We will close the public hearing on the conveyance of a portion of the Cedar Lee Middle School property, which we will discuss later this evening. At this time, Ms. Pulver will introduce the new Science Fair Director.
Good evening, Dr. Jack and members of the board. I have with me this evening, Chandra Wilkenmeyer from Liberty High School. She's a honors biology teacher, plus she's going to be teaching AP Biology this year. But in addition to all of that, she is also going to be our Science Fair, I guess we call her our director of our Science Fair for the county. If you remember, Vanita Ribero has been doing that, and she has gone on to teach at the Governor's School. So, Chandra was so instrumental in helping us last spring with a lot of the logistics and setting up of the Science Fair, and she was a really good sounding board for us. So, she was our obvious choice as our new Science Fair Director.
Great.
Andrew Wilkenmeyer.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. Great news, yeah. We're going to move into our announcements, and board members, if there's any changes, please let me know when I make the announcements.
Okay, I'll let you, I'll stop you before you do the first one.
Okay.
The Personnel Committee meeting, I believe we're going to cancel that, and maybe Suzanne, look for an email to come. We may have one little issue that we can do by email. Okay, and then the next one, the Parks and Rec Co-op, that is September 20th, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Great. Any others at this time? All right. Chairman's Night is Monday, August 22nd at 5:00 PM in the school administration office. There will be a school board work session Monday, August 22nd at 6:00 PM in the school administration conference room. There will be a building committee meeting Thursday, August 25th at 8:30 AM in the school administration conference room. There will be a special education advisory committee meeting on Thursday, September 1st at 5:30 PM in the central complex, Building A Conference Room. The school health advisory committee will meet on Wednesday, September 7th at 8:00 AM in the central complex, Building Conference Room. There will be a Personnel Committee meeting on Thursday, September 8th at 8:00 AM in the school administration conference room. The finance committee will meet Monday, September 12th at 5:00 PM in the library here at Falk Year High School, and the next regular school board meeting will be Monday, September 12th, right back here in the Falcon Room at 7:00 PM. At this time, we open up citizens' time. Community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. I did not see that we had anybody. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Everybody's spending so much time checking out the new website on their app, I'm sure. All right. We will now move into reports. At this time, school board members may report on our activities. I am going to start down here with Ms. Sloan, if that's okay with you.
Yes, we had our finance committee meeting canceled, had a couple things for moving forward on that, and no other meetings to report on at this time.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bland.
I've got a bunch.
All right.
No, not really. On Tuesday, July 26th, Dr. Jack and I visited the Falkir County Public Schools Sponsored Camp Moss Hollow Week. I believe there were 57 students there, Dave, I think, was it 57?
Around 60, that's right.
But it's close to 60. Students taking part in reading groups, science, math, and social studies, in addition to learning about the five needs to stay alive, and how important it is. It was not all work, though. There were plenty of activities for them to take the edge off in the evenings, including swimming, tennis, hiking, basketball, and of course, campfires. Now, I know I'm going to leave a name out, as I thank all of these people who were involved here, but please forgive me. I remember Dave Seward, Bria Grumbacher, Sarah Shemeli, Mrs. Cook, Ms. Van Buren, Mrs. Perator, Mr. White, Mrs. Armstrong, Mrs. Bringenberg, Ms. Graves, and Ms. Ailer. Thank you for all that you do. That was such a successful camp, and I know those kids had a great time up there. The following two days, on Wednesday and Thursday, Dr. Jack, Frank Finn, and Lauren Milburn and I met up with Shelley Nowbar, Carolyn Lamb, Dennis Atkins, and Laura Parker in Richmond to attend a great conference sponsored by the Virginia Department of Education and VSB and others. The topic was "Classrooms Not Courts rooms." It also talked about the 2016 school discipline and achievement gap. Now, the key discussion centered around discipline disproportionality in our schools. There were discussions about school policy, particularly zero tolerance policies, guidelines, and procedures. Now, how effective are they? Well, we had a lot of discussion about those as well. Here are some of the breakout examples that we could choose from while we were there. Removal or reduction of exclusionary practices, graduated discipline systems with instructional alternatives to exclusion, and procedures with accountability for equitable student outcomes, just to name a few. In other words, and these are my words, is finding a way to keep butts in the seat instead of in the streets. And folks, there were a lot of other breakout sessions there with a lot of other subject matter experts speaking. We had an extended period of questioning and answers, and the whole conference was an eye-opening for me. It really was. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity, Ginger, for attending.
Thank you for that. Mason? No report at this time?
Just a couple of things, a shout-out to all those folks in TV land, because I know so many are going to watch this. If you haven't read the summer newsletter yet, please do, it was great. Yeah, there was a lot of information there. Yeah.
Thanks to Karen.
Where's Karen? Because somebody asked me, he said, "He didn't write this stuff, does he?" I said, "No." No, please. And for all those folks in Cedar Run and Lee Districts, our next community meeting with our Board of Supervisors and school board members is on your calendar, right? August 31st. We're changing the date of that, it's August 31st at Liberty High School in the Eagle Room at 7 o'clock. And anybody in Lee and Cedar Run District come out with your questions or comments, and hopefully, you know, we have another good crowd. And just for my board members, if you haven't been down to Southeastern and checked out the new parking lot, the spaces look great and will be greatly appreciated. And Greg, I forgot to ask, the auditorium doors, are they in?
Work actually.
Okay.
Yay, Greg.
Yeah.
They're working on the range. When we're working the auto door in now.
Those, for, if you haven't noticed, the front of the auditorium on either side, those doors were not replaced when we did the renovation project. We just ran out of money. So, we had some money left over from another project, so we're fixing, we're doing those and some up. That hallway.
I'm going down the hallway.
Yeah, so, yeah. And that's all I have.
Dr. Jack?
I never heard anything mentioned about the doors before, it's the first I've heard of it. Was there something wrong with the doors? No, just kidding. Stannis.
He's terrible.
Also, I think Duke may have mentioned this, but we also received an award at the "Classrooms Not Courts Rooms" workshop conference. We received a state award called the Trailblazer Award. This program, so congratulations to Frank Finn and his, and his folks, and really everyone in Falkir County Public Schools. It's a great program, and we're leading the charge through VTSS, so that's awesome. Just wanted to mention, today, one of the best days of the school year, when the new teachers show up, and they're all so happy to be here, and overpaid, and they have, they have these things called benefits, and they're so excited. So, they're with, they were with HR today, taking care of all that stuff, they'll be doing the instructional piece tomorrow, and then the new teacher picnic will be at Vinhill Wednesday at 3:30. And that's also the day that all teachers report, is Wednesday, and the new teacher dinner is Thursday, sponsored by the Education Foundation, that starts at 5:30. And then convocation, a much more casual convocation experience awaits teachers and staff Friday, and it'll be here at Falkir High School, which is a little change of pace. So, got a lot going on this week, very busy week, but it was really great to see the new teachers here this morning. I'll be speaking to them tomorrow morning along with Dr. Mitchell and her department, but just great to see them, it's always an exciting time.
Great. I want to, first of all, congratulate the county, the citizens of this county, and the government of this county for the AAA bond rating that we have recently received.
Absolutely, yep.
As a school division, you may wonder why that's important to us. It's important to us because we're going to need to do some things with our buildings and our middle schools particularly, and having that rating really helps us in the future in terms of what we can invest into the learning spaces that we have, we provide for our students. So, congratulations to the Board of Supervisors and others for that, and certainly, I also say to the school division, the employees of the school division, because you do so much with so little, all the time, and we continue to really keep our fiscal house in order as a county. We have a new teacher dinner coming up, looking forward to that, and I hear that it's, you know, I've seen the planning for it, if you're a new teacher, you're going to get some good swag, so please look for that. A real shout-out. I had Facebook comments coming to me, "Have you seen the new website?" Right? If you have not checked it out, the new website looks fantastic. Yes, so people really, really like it. The new menus, how to navigate through it, I think it's very good for, for people learning how to do that. Not everything's up there, like bus routes, I think we're still getting those up, but you know, that's, that's just the normal course of business, but the look of that site is fantastic. The middle school committee, building committee, actually met today. We did a tour of Auburn Middle School. It was very eye-opening, I can tell you as one of the participants, hearing the whispers of people touring this school, what a great job in 2004 some people did on planning for that school, and it looks fantastic. Janice, Greg, your folks are, continue to do a great job there. So, I think we have some next steps in terms of looking at a survey and convening a meeting of the middle school committee, but work is progressing there. And finally, if you haven't seen it, I've seen buses around town being trained, and certainly, they go down and up some of the toughest roads around Warrenton, so I know if they can handle those roads, they can handle just about anything. So, congratulations to the folks doing that training. I think the community sees that the drivers really are taking this seriously. These people take care of our most precious cargo, our children, every day. So, thank you very much for that.
Chairman, Gorg, another shout-out maybe to the campus portal, the folks from IT that put that together for, I can say as a parent, very nice to be able to log into that and be able to do the electronic signatures. Here's Major Warner here. I was in and out of Kettle Run High School in 11 minutes from start to finish getting all signed up, and I, I'll tell you, last year it was about an hour. So, true story. It is saving parents' time in that, and all that electronic signature, I mean, I hope it all works out, I know it's new, but fewer papers to juggle, I think it's a great thing, and I think that, that parents and the school is going to be really happy with, with that new campus portal.
That's great.
Glad we did it.
That's great. We'll hear from Mr. Schrethser about our financial management report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Dr. Jack, good evening. This is your financial management report, and before I start, we're in that period of the year where we're closing one year's books and starting a new year, so this is, as of the data of '07, '08, '16, we're still making entries into the system, and hopefully we'll have a pretty close to final picture by our next finance committee meeting, and that's primarily the reason we didn't have one today. Anyway, in our school operating fund, Fund 205, everything looks great in terms of revenue, we're at 96 percent, and if you notice on expenditures, we are at 93 percent. Last year at this time, we were at 88 percent. Revenue-wise, we're at the same like we were in the previous year. I actually took the time to watch Marcy talk around this time last year, and we're still in that 1 percent, so I mean, we, we are spending our money to that last percent essentially, is what this means. In our school asset fund, we're performing revenue-wise at 93 percent. Last year, we were a little bit higher, but this number includes fund balance, so we're, we're doing good there, and in terms of expenditures, we're at 54, 55 percent. That looks great. In the school textbook fund, 100 percent revenue collection, that's where we were this time last year, and in terms of our expenditures, we're at, we're approaching 50 percent, so the account is a positive balance. And here's the last one, is the school nutrition fund. I've been watching it closely, it's kind of a roller coaster ride of emotions with this one, but revenue-wise, we're at 88 percent. We were at 84 last year, and so right now, the, the count is somewhere between breaking even to maybe we might need to use a slight amount of our fund balance, but we're going to be okay. And other than that, we're at the time of the year where we do the annual school report and other reporting to the state. Mr. Chairman, you reported on the AAA bond rating, that's great, and that's all I have for you this evening. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you very much. Ms. Downs will present the Human Resources Department report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. Dr. Jack, well, it's the best time of the year. Today was the first day of our orient, two-day orientation process. We had 108 in attendance, 92 were teachers, and 16 were classified instructional assistants, custodians, and school nutrition staff. Currently, we have hired 95 certified staff. Classified new hires are at 18, and of those numbers, 92 are teachers, so we did have full attendance of our teachers today. Vacancies, we have 10 classified vacancies remaining to recruit forward to start the school year, and 12 certified. Of the 12 certified positions, seven and a half of them are teaching, and before I left the office today at 5:30, we did extend three more offers. So, it is our goal to start school with teachers in those seats, who we're still actively recruiting.
How about the swag at the new teacher dinner?
I don't know about the swag.
Oh, I think it's going to look good.
It sounds very, very exciting. So, be there at the new teacher dinner at 5:30, Stone Ridge Event Center. And then on Wednesday, our teacher group for connectivity and relationships, families can come, we have the Larry Weeks Pool that they can swim in, we're doing a run that starts at 3 o'clock, so they can know the trails of Vinhill, and then we are breaking bread over at Vinhill as well, we have dinner being served. So, any questions tonight?
How many bus drivers do we need?
We have four vacancies, but we are also down on substitute bus drivers, so we have a pretty good orientation group, but we're still going to be doing a job fair next week as well, to try to get some bus drivers in, in the door. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move that the school board approve the minutes from the June 13th school board meeting, excuse me, the June 28th school board meeting and work session, and the July 11th school board meeting, the monthly bills and payroll, the revision of Policy 4-4.2 School Transportation Program, and the personnel actions which include the following. The hiring of one ESL supervisor, three assistant principals, two guidance counselors, 25 teachers, one mental health specialist, two integration specialists, four instructional assistants, one school nurse, one attendance case manager, one grant coordinator, and one office associate, the resignation of one psychologist and one bus driver, the retirement of one teacher, one secretary bookkeeper, and one office associate, and leave of absence for one teacher.
Second. There's been a motion and a second that the board approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the June 13th school board meeting, June 28th school board meeting and work session, and the July 11th school board meeting, the monthly bills and payroll, the revision of Policy 4-4.2 School Transportation Program, and personnel actions which include the following, new and newly hired one ESL supervisor, three assistant principals, two guidance counselors, 25 teachers, one mental health specialist, two integration specialists, four instructional assistants, one school nurse, one attendance case manager, one grant coordinator, and one office, office associate, and the resignation of one psychologist, one bus driver, and the retirement of one teacher, one secretary bookkeeper, and one office associate, and the leave of absence of one teacher. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. And at this time, Dr. Jack?
Mr. Chairman, Pam Pulver, if she's here, do I see Pam?
Yep, she's right there.
Pam's going to introduce the new fresh grant coordinator.
She didn't know what she was doing.
I am so very, very happy to announce Jessica LaCefka is our new fresh grant coordinator, and if you don't know what that means, that means Falkir reaches excellence in student health, and she's going to help us coordinate the grant that involves the four wellness integration program specialists, a nutritionist, trying to get the county on a track for wellness and fitness from here on out. So, I really appreciate Jessica coming tonight to be introduced.
All right.
She's going to take some of my work, too.
Also, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Sarah Lynn Ailer. She'll be our new ESL and rural languages supervisor, and it's always exciting when you interview someone with a committee, and the committee's number-one unanimous choice actually accepts your offer, that's always exciting. Sarah Lynn's a graduate of Mary Washington College with a bachelor's in Spanish civilization and literature. She has a master's from George Mason in bilingual multicultural education, 28 years in education, having started in Fairfax, she came to Falkir eight years ago, and she's taught elementary through high school level, which is great, particularly for this position. And she was formerly Falkir's dual language and ELL specialist, and that position was also formerly held by Laura Hoover, so she's following in Laura's footsteps again. And before I put you on the spot, Sarah Lynn, I do want to thank Laura for, was it seven years of service in this position? Five years. So, five years of outstanding service in this position. We are deeply indebted to you for your tremendous service, and wish you all the best at Pierce, MM Pierce, as their new assistant principal. So, thank you. [applause] Sarah Lynn, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, it's an honor, and I appreciate the privilege of serving the students and teachers in Falkir County and following in Laura Hoover's footsteps.
Thank you very much.
We are just so happy to have Sarah Lynn, but we want to say goodbye to Laura. But in her last, she came here for one last thing, and that is to give you your Star Talk shirts. All right. And we're just going to miss Laura so much. Our staff back there, just say goodbye, Laura. This will be her last thing, but she has done so much to promote rural language and ESL.
Absolutely. Thanks, Laura.
Well, good evening, I know it's strange to see me not with a textbook adoption this year, but I am here, as I have been, to bring you the 2016 Star Talk t-shirt with our new FCPS Star Talk logo that one of the Liberty High School students helped us design. We changed the design of the shirt this year, and on the back, our theme was Hungry Planet, so we have my summer in Turkey and my summer in Egypt. In the program this year, the kids followed the life of an exchange student who was dropped into a family in Turkey and Egypt, depending on which language class they were in, and they followed him, and they, it was based on the book, Hungry Planet. So, we have, I have those shirts for each of you, so you can wear, and people will speak Turkish and Arabic to you. And I also have one for Ms. Callie.
Thank you, thank you.
I knew that would be mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Star Talk t-shirts.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura.
Your hair looks great, I like your cut.
And I will, as the torch now, err.
Perfect. All right, we will now move into our information items. Ms. Bourne will present the conveyance of deed and easement to VDOT around, is it actually? All right. He's installing doors, giving tours, and presenting reports.
Everything else. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Jack. I am here this evening to request the board to authorize the chairman to execute the deed conveying title and easements to property at Cedar Lee Middle School to the Virginia Department of Transportation for road improvements and stormwater management.
Department of Transportation for road improvements and stormwater management. Next summer, summer 2017, the Virginia Department of Transportation will construct road improvements on Schoolhouse Road adjacent to Cedar Lee Middle School. VDOT's final plans for these improvements were approved after a public hearing and citizen review and comment. These improvements require a temporary construction easement and permanent easements on Cedar Lee Middle School property. The work includes the widening of the intersection of Schoolhouse, where it meets the main entrance to the front parking lot at Cedar Lee, creating a three-way stop intersection, if you can envision that. Also included are curb, gutter, and pathway along Schoolhouse Road that will eventually connect to the Safe Routes to School project trail on that same side of the road. During construction, access to all school driveways and entrances will be maintained. The conveyance of the requested easements will not affect the, you know, use of the school property, nor impact any recreational use of the same. The building committee has reviewed this request and forwards it to the school board for consideration. The school board is requested to act on this request at tonight's meeting. And finally, in closing, VDOT offers the appraised market value for the easements and conveyance of title in the amount of $12,527. Any questions?
Do we have any questions from the board members?
That improvement is well overdue.
Yeah, absolutely.
It really is.
I do have one question. Along Schoolhouse Road, was there, were there other properties that had to deed property in order for this project to go forward? I thought I saw it on the map that there may have been.
I'm thinking the church across on the other side had some easements they had to convey, but I think that's the only one I'm aware of.
Is this contingent upon them doing that, or are we?
My knowledge, no.
No, okay.
No. Improvements are planned and ready to go next summer.
Okay.
And the work will be completed prior to the opening of school, too, so it'll be done during the summer months.
I'm ready to make that motion now. Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board move information item 14A to action item 15A for consideration for approval this evening, and renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly.
Back.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board move information item 14A to action item 15A for consideration for approval this evening and renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. Okay, we have one more information item before we move to action, and that is policy revision, policy 1-5.1, which is about our committees. We have several types of committees. One is a standing committee. We have special committees, and we have advisory committees. The recommend, or the types of committees we're looking at clarifying and improving our policy and possibly regulations around is specifically on the advisory committees. I am sponsoring this agenda item. However, I did not make the recommendations of all the adjustments that you all have received as adjustments to be considered. So, with that, I would like to open up discussion, not only about these, but about the process you want to go through in terms of evaluating these, particularly when you think we would move these to action item.
Being we just got these, I'm not comfortable even talking about anything the other night. I mean, I would rather have a conversation at the work session, and if that means that the committees might not get done until October instead of September or whatever, then so be it.
I have a concern as well. I would like the actual advisory committees to see these as well, to provide input, for each of us to look over what we think is good. I found some redundancy. I found some over clarification, I'll call it. So, I think there's some verbiage that can be eliminated from the policy and put into regulations, particularly on the processes of how committees are formed and governed. But I think if you all could take a look at these items, I know I have gone through a number of notes. I think we can make some updates. I think this is needed. I think, for me, the one clarification is that these are advisory committees and really ensuring that the advisory and review process continues to move forward. These are valuable assets to our school board, to our community. They do not act on our behalf unless we tell them or ask them to, but they advise us, and I really value their input. We received reports a couple weeks ago from many of them for the year end about what they advised, and so I think the review process works well. So, this time, I would ask everybody to review these.
Absolutely.
Look at your questions. Ms. Callahan, if you could collect any comments that we have, and then ensure that at least that the notification goes out to the advisory committees, at least the chairs from this past year, those we know are already elected for this next year, so that they are aware that we're considering these.
I don't even know if I'm ready to have edits. I just have questions on some of them.
And maybe we look at the questions we have on what, you know, things, not just what does this word mean, but intent, what we were trying to achieve with this policy, with the clarifications. Okay? But to those who put these forward, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. I think this will really move the discussion on this forward, but I don't think we're ready at this time to do much on these other than review them.
Right.
Okay.
I'll move that the school board authorize the chairman to execute the deed conveying title and easements to property at Cedar Lee Middle School to the Virginia Department of Transportation for road improvements and stormwater management.
Second.
Been a motion and a second that the board authorize the approval of the conveyance of deed and easement to VDOT for road improvements, and what was the other?
Stormwater management.
Management has presented this evening. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, and the motion passes. Anything else to come before this board?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right.
So, moved.
We adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming out this evening. Best of luck in prepping for next week.
Go get them.